Let me know when you've got them, so should I welcome them, I guess?
They are actually, we have 25 attendees.
Okay.
Mayor Pat is not going to be there.
Twenty-five? We only have 20 people signed up. How's that?
Larry Hushower is one of them.
Oh, he should be on the... Well.
Can you guys see the attendees as well?
No, I can't see them.
Okay. No, I mean, on the list, on the participants' list, you wouldn't be able to see the video.
Yeah, we can see.
I can see. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so you can see their names.
Right. If you, if you click on the attendees tab.
I got, I've got it. I got it. What did I do? I don't see them all, but I see some. I just see the, I just see the, the panel.
If you, if you do go to participants, it opens up that tab on the right. That's what Carl was saying, is if you go to the attendees, instead of participants, you can see like, there's like 40 people there. Participants, and then it says panelists.
I see. You know.
Thirty-nine.
There's Larry. Why isn't he on this side?
I'm gonna go ahead and prepare the live.
Okay.
Here's your 30-second warning.
Okay, thank you.
Town's Live is active.
Awesome.
I spoke with Larry, and I gave him directions to get to the panelists.
Okay, thank you. Did he say anything about Delegate Boucher? I don't, I don't see him on here.
Alrighty, I'll be giving you your five countdown now.
Okay.
Five, four, three.
Hello and good evening. Thank you, everyone, for attending. This is the Planning Commission meeting of August. This is August the 31st, 2020. We will open the meeting by standing and saying the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the May 22nd, 27th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I will move to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. We approved the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes, just please raise your hand, so I can see it. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Our next order of business is for any citizens' comments. I will tell the participants or attendees, these are comments of things that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have anyone, I don't think we have anyone who wanted to make any other comments, other than the things that are on the agenda.
Please press star nine on your phone, so you can raise your hand, and we can recognize you. And we do have one person, so I'll go ahead and unmute them.
Okay, I see that. Yes. The person that had the phone number, you may speak. Please say your name and your address.
I think I raised my hand by accident.
Okay.
I guess he didn't, he's not gonna speak. Bear with us, everyone. This is a new territory, as always. This is a different type of meeting than we've had before, because we are allowing the attendees to come in to, to the meeting as well. Suzanne.
Hello.
Can you unmute?
I thought I did.
Okay, no, you're fine. Go ahead, Suzanne. Thank you.
Great. I just want to say I've been a resident of Mount Airy, not in the town limits, but in the outerlying area for over 35 years. And I am not happy about losing our small town to a big office park. I'd like to learn more about what the plan is for that. I think that traffic on Route 27 will be awful. It's already bad enough in that area, and I don't see a plan to address that. I'd like to, you know, hear what, what the thoughts are on how to address the traffic in that area. And I think one of the ideas that I've heard, that the reason this wants to, wants to be put in place as an office park, and correct me if I'm wrong, calling it an office park.
Roxanne, excuse me, Suzanne, I'm sorry. Roxanne, if it's an item that's on the agenda, we should wait until we discuss that to bring it up. We should wait till that agenda item gets into play, before we start letting citizens talk about something. If it's an item that's on the agenda. If it's something that's not on the agenda, we can talk about that now. I'm sorry, Suzanne, I just, that's.
That's okay.
Yes, ma'am, it is on the agenda, and I.
Perfect. Thank you. I didn't see the agenda, so I didn't know it was on the agenda later, but I will wait.
No, it is.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm too nice. I don't like to cut anybody off. Okay. Anyone else that has any comments not related to the Harrison Lysheer, or the Twin Arch Park? Okay, seen none. We'll go to the Carolyn Frederick County Planner. I'll talk first about Tim Goodfellow. He did send me an email and apologized. He would not be in attendance this evening. He had another commitment, but we got an email from him, so I sent him one back and said, "Thank you for, for letting us know." But he, I think he is coming either the next meeting or the October meeting. I can't remember. The next is Hannah, are you here?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well.
Good, yes.
Um, I guess I should start out with the other items before getting to the rezoning request. At the county, we are just wrapping up the annual report, and as I'm told, Mount Airy has already certified their portion. So we're just going to other municipalities now, and then we'll go to the County Planning Commission in October. And we just finished the spring water and sewer amendment, but we're about to start the fall water and sewer amendment. So you might get an email from Price Wagner coming up. And I think that's it for other items. But for the employment campus request, it was originally going to be heard by the Planning Commission again on Wednesday, but we have received a lot of public comment, not just about that Mount Airy's request, but all over the county. So we decided it would be easier and less confusing to break it into three separate meetings. So the employment campus will now be heard on September 30th, and that is also a night meeting that'll be at 6 o'clock. So if you guys have any questions before then, feel free to reach out. And any citizens that have any questions, feel free to reach out. My name is Hannah Weber, and my email and phone number is on the county website. Does the Planning Commission have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What did you mean by three separate meetings, and then you just referenced one date?
Yes, so originally, we had three different groupings for all 30 requests. So we're splitting it between this Wednesday, the 2nd, then September 15th, and then September 30th.
Okay.
So the employment campus will be on September 30th.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. Thank you.
Hannah, Roxanne, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that the citizens that are listening as an attendee in this meeting, could you reference the actual numbers, so that they understand that this is a parcel, two parcels away from the Harrisons, your parcel?
Yes, we have been getting a little bit of confusion, which is completely understandable. This staff report is for the rezoning request. The request can be found on the county website under Carol rezoning, under EC1320200030. The request is going from conservation to, to employment campus, and the entire staff report can be found online. And like I said, if you have any questions about that, feel free to reach out to me.
And I think we also have a copy of that staff report.
Yeah, it is part of this agenda, and on our Civic Plus link, I did attach it to that as well, so that for citizens in the area can be more informed. Thank you, Hannah, for.
Thank you. I do want to say, Hannah, I know that John tried to get in on the meeting the first time, and he could not get in to make any comments, so I, I'm really glad that you've decided to reschedule this. But I want to make sure that everyone can get in and speak, because he had some things to speak to that we had concerns about. And the other thing was, the comment was made that we were okay with this. We have concerns. We're not, we're not okay. I mean, so I don't know how that got to you all that we were okay with this.
Yeah.
There is a letter that is, John is.
Yes.
And I want you to please make sure that that gets to everyone on the commission.
Yes, John sent that to me, Ms. Eisenberg, and Mary Lane, and he also sent that to the Planning Commission as well. And we will be here to include that in the presentation on the 30th.
Okay, thank you.
I do.
Yes.
Hannah, a quick question. Bill Butts, are you gonna be able to stay with the meeting the rest of the time we're on tonight? So when we get to additional discussion, if someone has a question, or you have a comment, we'd get to hear it?
Yeah, yes, sir. I'll be here.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for me?
I don't see any at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. The next thing is the discussion on ordinance 2020-21, the adequate facilities related to Pete, to the police to the citizen ratio. Larry, are you on here, so you can, there he is. John, you're muted.
I see, I just sent him the link. There he is. I just sent him the link, so he should be coming online here as a panelist.
All right.
Okay. Are you there, Larry?
I'm here, if you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. All right, so ordinance 2020-21. Basically, what I'm trying to do is get us 24-hour police coverage in the APFO, which I consider a, a minimum requirement, or I would consider that to be when, when we would be adequate. And with the town of 10,000 people, ratio of 1.2, as opposed to the one officer per 1,000 residents in town, I think is where our APFO needs to stand. So basically, what the ordinance does is brings us up to speed, so we can get 24-hour coverage in a town of 10,000 people. So we go from 1 to 1.2, and then there's a little bit of verbiage change on there in the same sentence, so. And, and, you know, so whatever planning thinks about that, y'all can make a recommendation and send it back to the council, and I can, I can answer any basic questions if you'd like to ask anything.
Okay. This is Judy. I have a quick question. What is the, what's the fiscal impact on changing this?
The fiscal impact? Each officer, I believe, comes in during the budget discussion. I think it was about 140, or 100, it might even been 180,000, when you factor in the car, the officer, and, you know, all the, all the impacts that come with hiring an additional officer.
And this would allow for, so it's not necessarily one additional officer. It would be, because you've got a, because of shift work and everything, you're saying, oh, you need is one more officer to be able to allow for 24-hour availability of police officers?
Yeah. What the chief and Kurt have always contended from the beginning is that to provide 24-hour coverage in the town, as it stands right now, with a population near 10,000, is 12 officers to provide that 24-hour coverage. During the budget discussion in May, we added one officer on top of the 10 that we currently have. So we're up to 11. So we are, we're real close. And then if this goes into effect, then, you know, come around budget time next year, or if any further development goes on in town that brings in added residents, then we would probably have to plus up by one officer. If this passed, we would definitely have to plus up by one officer to be adequately, have an adequate police force.
And what do we do now?
Well, right now, we have 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM, we don't have coverage. And we have agreements with the counties, and, and that's how we get our coverage, is we're using outside source.
So we have no town police coverage during that time?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it's 3:00 to 5:00 AM.
So what is.
And what's the cost of that compared to the cost of hiring an additional officer?
Well, you know, we could keep doing the county agreement, and, and there is no added cost of that. We're currently doing that. If we're gonna add this.
I assume that you're, I assume we're paying the county to do that. So what, what's the difference in what we're paying the county compared to not paying the county, but instead hiring a new officer?
Well, I, actually, I don't believe there is a cost. I would, I would verify that, but we have agreements with the county.
Okay.
And those, those agreements work both ways, you know, there could be.
Okay, I got it. So have there been any issues or problems with this?
From 3:00 to 5:00 AM?
Yeah, the current arrangement?
Yes, we've had vandalism in Twin Ridge. That's occurred between 3:00 and 5:00 AM, and we end up having to get county help. And the, the impact of that is you don't have somebody on scene. So you're waiting for somebody to show up. So that's, that's the, the impact of it, is, is you have a, an amount of time in the day where you're relying on the county to respond, and that's an increased response time.
And Ken, has overtime been explored?
Well, yeah, but this is more a, a matter of, of how much you can get out of the personnel that you currently have. So we're, we're already doing overtime for, you know, different events and everything. You know, and, you know, I guess you can only get so much blood out of a turnip, is what I'm saying.
Well, I assume they're getting paid overtime.
Well, of course, they're getting paid. You know, and if you like overtime, and you got two kids in college.
That's right. So, so I don't mean to keep asking questions, but this is the first I heard of this, and there's not a lot of other information. Maybe I missed something earlier in the, whatever. But my recollection is, is that initially, there was proposal for additional officers, and there was a lot of opposition to that, which is why I'm trying to figure out.
Well, the, if.
Yeah, you could explain, because you probably.
The opposition that you're talking about is in, in terms of funding and added officer. Certainly, we had discussions, you know, with the more fiscally conservative crowd that was reluctant to pay the, and, and as I'm recollecting, it was about 180,000. You know, that's a significant chunk of change. In my mind, as a councilman, I mean, our number one responsibility is to keep the town safe. And I think at a minimum, we ought to have 24, 24-hour coverage in town. You know, I would rather pay for an added officer and subtract money from somewhere else. I feel like 24-hour coverage is, is a minimum requirement.
As I remember, that's what we were supposed to have by having our own police force, was that we would have 24-hour coverage. That was the goal.
Right, but that wasn't, the goal, I mean, it didn't, it wasn't gonna start out that way, correct? As we added officers, it would get up to 24 hours. Is that correct?
That's a fair statement. That, that's a fair statement. And I, you know, initially, we were, I, I think when we entered this, and, you know, certainly, we've had to learn as we, you know, come into our own police force. But initially, we thought we could get away with basically what we were using from the state police, you know, which was having two or three people down here. As the police force has matured, you know, what we found is that, you know, there are a lot of added requirements that go into our police department. And I think that, you know, we were pretty quick, and when I say we, it happened before I was elected, to ramp up to 10 officers. And, and I believe that that got us close, but it still left that gap, you know, from 3:00 to 5:00 AM. So I, I think this is, you know, as, as we have learned more about, you know, our police department, we, you know, at least I've come to realize that, you know, it's that 1.2 ratio that provides us 12 officers and 24-hour coverage. Looking into the future, you know, if we grow at the rate that, you know, that downtown vision plan, you know, kind of suggests, then you're looking at a population that would add, you know, and, and I'm not saying I support or don't support. I don't want to get into a side conversation on that, but, you know, we could bring upwards of 1,400 people added into this town, and so that would put us somewhere around 11,400 people. And, and we may ramp up to, with the 1.2 ratio, 13 to 14 officers. You know, so that's, that's kind of where we're headed as a, I think as a police department. And, and if, and not to, you know, take too much time away from your questions, but the, I have looked at some other municipalities, and the APFO is a minimum, and there are numerous municipalities that, that actually employ above the APFO to, you know, get that sense of safety for their different communities, with their different issues.
Yes, um, I have a couple of thoughts. One is that I guess I'm concerned about where we're getting the money from, and what, you know, you talked about, because, you know, this is more important, and we could take it from someplace else. That someplace else, I guess I'm wondering what that is? Because it's only been a couple of years, and we've gone from having four state police officers to now having 11, and we're saying we need more. And I didn't think the crime rate has gone up that significantly in Mount Airy. I'm not saying that I'm against, I'm against, I support safety. I'm not against all of it. I guess I'm just looking at the money and what the crime rate really is, that all of a sudden, we're, we've gone from four to needing 12 at minimum, and where the money's coming from.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'm basing it on 24-hour coverage as the, as the minimum requirement. The other reason that I'm pushing to get this now is that, you know, in front of potentially some development occurring, I would like for this to be known now, before the developers come in and start talking about growth in Mount Airy, because I'd, I'd like to have that minimum requirement established at this point, as opposed to being reactive later.
Okay, I have two questions. One is a follow-up to Judy's, which is, do we know where the money would come from? Or, I mean, is there, I, I think that there probably is money in the budget, or, or are you actually really looking at taking money away from some other services in order?
I'm not looking at, I'm not looking at anything happening this current fiscal year. I'm looking at next fiscal year, that we would look at the APFO requirement, and as a, as part of next year's budget negotiations, we would figure out how to get the money to add an officer next fiscal year.
Okay, okay. My second, sorry, my second question has to do with the APFO, and is it, is it a requirement to amend the APFO in order for the town to hire an additional officer, if the town council and thought that that was necessary?
No, it is not a requirement to have it in the APFO to go higher.
Okay. And I tell you what concerns me about it is, if you have it in the APFO, then it becomes a requirement, like as you, you said a few minutes ago, that it could be up to 14, 15, rather than just saying, all right, we, the town council have decided, you know, next fiscal year, that we're gonna allocate this additional money, and we're gonna hire another officer, and then that's the council's choice if that passes, as opposed to putting it in the APFO, and then it becomes a requirement, sort of automated, rather than having to be discussed and voted on each, each time. So that would be another concern of mine.
Yeah, and I, I hear what you're saying. My sense is, I would rather get it in the APFO and have a developer have to look at it and come up with a solution with us, as opposed to us, you know, going out there and, and hiring the added officers.
So you're saying that, that you're saying that you think the developer would have to contribute financially to hiring the officer? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that he would have to meet the adequate public facilities ordinance, which means some sort of creativity has to occur for that developer to develop. So, so yes, I, you know, I, I can't tell you how that money would show up.
I just, just looking for clarity. I got you.
Yeah.
Larry, Larry, I have a related question. We've been renting space for the police force for a while now.
Yes.
And one of the thoughts was, ideally, we'd like to try to create a permanent space for them. Two or three different possible future locations have been, have been mentioned. Do you have a preferred timeframe, or do you have a, a projected timeframe within which we would try to make that happen?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, there's a lot of dominos that are kind of falling in our town, and I think that, you know, we are looking at, at several locations right now, and even have a concept of, of what the police department building, police station would look like. And I would think that, you know, within probably two years, we would be committing to something.
Okay.
Meaning a building, and hopefully, within two years, we would have the property to put it on.
Okay, thank you. I'll just, there have been some comments here. I want to make sure we get every one in. The chairperson for Streets and Roads said, "Thank you, Councilman Hushower, for putting the safety of our residents first. The APFO should be met." Does anyone, excuse me, else on the commission have any questions or concerns? Seen none. Tom, we're just looking for a recommendation for or against the, the APF, this ordinance, correct? Okay, thank you. Hold on, there's one other comment. Dick Swanson has shared in a Facebook comment, "Larry is correct. The nationwide rate of police to residents is higher to Mount Airy's ration proposed in this APFO proposal." I'm going to just ask, since it's just a recommendation for this APFO, all those council members, Planning Commission members, excuse me, that are for the ordinance, please raise your hand. So we have one, two, three, four. Those against? One.
No, 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 two, at least.
Two, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. Okay, so it's four to two.
So are we missing someone?
No, we only have six, we always only have six.
Scott, oh, 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 cause she doesn't vote.
Right, right, unless it's a tie, right. So we are, um, sending this back, Larry, to the ca- to the town council, uh, recommending, uh, approval of this, uh, ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next item of business is Resolution twenty, twenty dash forty-three, the joint annexation discussion of Harrison, the Harrison-Lazier property. Before we start, I want to give a little introduction, kind of, um, in how this is going to work and what we have, uh, been doing. I want to thank everyone who has sent in an email or a comment. In order for us, there are twenty people tonight that are going to speak. So in order to expedite things, those emails that we have received, and the council, the commissioners did all receive them and have read them. They're also going to be made part of the record on the website, so that they will be, uh, a, a few of the emails ask it to be, please put in as part of the record. It will be considered part of the record for this meeting. I also want to say, before we get started, this, um, this property was, um, recognized in the twenty thirteen master plan for future annexation into the town. So it hasn't just like come about. There's been a lot of things that have happened between now and then. The, the, um, the request for annexation did not come in. And there have been meetings with, um, a member of our council. And that member, Carl Munder, has, every time there was a meeting, has given an update on the property. We are going to, I will be naming you, I have the list of people who want to speak. You will have three minutes to speak. Like I said, there are twenty of you here. If you think that, and everyone is important, and I know that a lot of people are going to be saying the same thing. But, um, if you think that what you have said has already been said, I would ask you to yield to the next person. The first person, um, we're going to have speak, I think, Carl, if you want to give an update, on the Harrison-Lazier, and then we're going to have Frank Gerchball, the representative of IDA, uh, speak to this annexation. We'll have the planning commission ask any questions, and then we will open it to the public. Okay, Carl.
All right, sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I'll give the, pretty much go over the update that I have presented to the council at previous meetings, particularly the one from July sixth, twenty twenty. A couple of things first.
Carl, before you do this, I'm sorry, can you just kind of hit some highlights?
Sorry, well, as I said, I wasn't just playing, like, highlights of, as in what area?
Um.
Hold on, John.
Oh, terrible, John.
Your, your, our annexation, uh, I read this. I just, we're, we're talking about him, he's, he's.
John, you're, we, we can't hear you, you're all garbly.
Is that any better?
No. Sorry.
Roxanne.
Yes.
Roxanne, may, maybe, um, Carl could use his.
Yeah, that's what I was going to go over.
Hey, can you share that with us? Can, can you put it up on the screen?
Me or John, John has control, I have no control over this.
John, can you put the update on the screen? One minute. One minute.
Carl, as a panelist, you do have the ability, if you'd like.
I was gonna, I thought you did.
Oh, well, as I said, I, this is kind of.
He doesn't want to have to do that.
I would rather let John do it, because I don't, not sure what, if I gave you access to my screen, what would pop up.
That's not very.
I'm using dual screens here, I'm saying, so, I don't want to be popping up to.
No, it's fine, you might have private.
That's true.
Okay, so, can you hear me now?
No, no, you're no better, I'm sorry. Okay, let's, um, instead of that, I'm sorry. So Carl, are there any, I mean, anything that you can contribute real quick?
Well, I mean, let me just go over, I mean, as, hold on. Let me start off at a couple of pages down, um, in the presentation. Basically, starting a couple of things first. There have been no development plans shown or submitted to town. This process is for the annexation, there we go, thank you, John.
Go.
Get down to about pa- page three, John, there you go. Let's go down to, there you go. As I said, there's been no development plan shown or submitted to town. This process is for the annexation of the Harrison-Lazier property only. There seemed to have been some confusion that the Holver property, that the county planner, um, referenced to earlier, might be part of this, that is not the truth. And that, as far as I know, the town has no interest in annexing the Holver property whatsoever, or our water and sewer being extended to that property. If approved for annexation, the development of the property will go through the normal approval process. And as this meeting shows, the public will be allowed to submit comments during the annexation process and the development approval process, process if the parcel is annexed. Next one, John, please, overview of the LaSheer property.
I think that's, if you just do that, I think we'll, we're good to go.
Okay, as it shows here, this is an overview of, as the annexation agreement has in it, as the property would be divided up. The best way to describe it is the power lines are the dividing line there. Anything south of the power lines would be in the OPE zone of the town, which is the town classification that would be applied to that. The, just north of the power lines in the upper left of the map is approximately forty acres for future use. And as per the agreement, that cannot be developed until that southern portion is fully developed. And if I'm remembering correctly, if that future use ever does come into town, it has to bring its own water to it, and it will have to go through all the process again. So there's nothing guaranteed on that. And to the right of that is a parkland that would be dedicated to the town of approximately eighty-five acres to be developed as the town sees fit, as parks, which could be fields, walking trails, combination of anything.
Okay.
And I think that's good enough, Roxanne, is that?
Um.
Does anybody else, does any of the commission members have?
Jean is also putting up the direct link for the public, it is, uh, on the agenda, and you can get the entire, uh, report from Carl from that. I just kind of, that, that's good, I just kind of wanted him to highlight, especially, um, the size and what was going to happen as far as those, um, that property is concerned.
I have a question.
Yeah, Larry.
What is a water loop?
The water loop is something that the town engineer suggested as a way to, I want to say a backup water access to the Nottingham community is, it's my understanding that currently, the Nottingham community is only fed by one pipe, so this would guarantee like a backup access if something went, went wrong with it.
Okay. Is Barney, Barney's not here anymore? He was here. Okay. Oh. Was that right, what he said, Barney?
That, that's, that's correct, yeah. It's not just for Nottingham, but it's just for our, our water system in general. You do want to connect your links so that you don't have single points of failure.
Okay. Uh, next, we'll hear from, um, the, um, developer or the, um, repres- the representative for the developer, the developer's IDA, uh, the representative this evening is Frank Gerchball.
Uh, yeah, good evening, um, I'm, uh, a representative from the IDA Board of Directors. I'm the secretary of the, uh, County Authorized Corporation, Industrial Development Authority. I just, will make a short statement here of introduction, as much as anything. And, um, my, uh, I was asked, uh, to become a volunteer board member of the Industrial Development Authority of Carroll County about eleven years ago, um, by one of, uh, well, the board member president, um, and Bob Scott. And he felt, uh, that I could help with the commissioner's plan to have the IDA develop the Harrison-Lazier property, knowing, um, that it could become, uh, could have a significant impact on the community of Mount Airy. And having, and he knew that I had spent most of my life living and working with the public and the private sector of this community. He felt I could contribute a constructive view on the best approaches to develop this property with an eye on the town's needs and concerns, and the county's need to make this property an economic asset. And just for the record, um, I have no financial incentives or investments in this project. The IDA is a voluntary, member-appointed corporation that is charged with developing business activity in all of Carroll County, and that promote positive economic, uh, health for the citizens of Carroll County. And as it, as we have been charged, the county wants this property fully developed. And I want the, uh, I want my hometown of Mount Airy to benefit as much as possible with the least amount of objectionable impact. As long as we continue to expand in population growth, um, in, in, in this world right now, growth is inevitable with our proximity to Baltimore, Washington, and Frederick. It's going to take ten to twenty years, or even more, to fully develop this project. So my wish is that we develop insightful planning that will promote the best economic and community welfare, uh, benefits for the generations to follow. So I am in this, uh, with my heart and trying to use the, the best, uh, available resources we have, and hopefully work together to make this happen, uh, for the full benefit of all concerned. And I'm here, um, and I will be the, the point person, for the most part, uh, for, for most of the planning and zoning process that goes on with this, other than legal details on this.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Uh, there was one question concerning the water loop, Barney, maybe you can answer this? Some of us have heard that the water would supply, would supply for future Nottingham development, is this correct? Or John, I don't.
So Nottingham development is pretty much complete, there are other properties that, um, I guess, uh, you have Dobbs property that's next to it, that could, in the future, come in as an annexation, but there's nothing earmarked for where, where that water would go at this time. Correct.
Another question was, can less, uh, can less be developed? I think you're talking about the Harrison-Lazier property. At this point in time, do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I would ask for, and Barney and, and Frank, you don't have to do it necessarily tonight. I think we're going to have an extended conversation about this. But obviously, one of the original motivators, uh, for us to, to consider a possible annexation. And when we were updating the master plan, uh, that culminated in two thousand thirteen, it was pretty clear to us that we were interested only in moderate growth. And quite honestly, unless there was a compelling reason to expand, uh, the outline of the town, we, uh, we didn't see a need for it, or a justification for it. We saw instead the opportunity and, um, the priority to look at infill. One of the things that, uh, is going to be an issue, and it's, there's going to be some, some talk about it, is the water capacity that apparently, uh, has been proven that, in terms of existing wells, that, um, that this, this property has available, and, um, the backup that that could provide to the town. Barney, can you speak to, you know, that watershed and that capacity? And I think, uh, even for folks who live outside of that property, uh, there's a concern about how much of that might be pulled out, and if that might endanger them going forward.
Yeah, sure, um, so, right now, we have, um, vacant land or land that might be redeveloped in the future, that, uh, could benefit from water. So as far as infill property, like you said, not expanding except for Harrison-Lazier, that is where the water is now. But, uh, that, um, we probably have, we, we have projected amounts of, of water that we're going to need for just regular infill development, and that's in our master plan. And, um, you know, there's a couple, at least a couple hundred thousand gallons that we'd be looking for. And from this Harrison-Lazier property, the town will benefit about ninety thousand gallons. So it doesn't even get us to full infill development, but, uh, it takes us, you know, a good step towards it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Roxanne, I mean, I, well, I have questions, but can, can we speak after the community? Because they might be answered or whatever.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Someone just asked where the Dobbs property is that we keep mentioning. John, do you want to try to come on again and explain where that is?
So, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I don't know, nothing changed, so I'm not sure, I was looking for an external microphone, I apologize. So, um, the Dobbs property is to the east of Nottingham community. Uh, and that, currently, there's no plan that's under review for that parcel. So I, I think initially, I'm not sure Barney might be able to speak to it better than I. When that Dobbs property first came in to the town for, uh, I guess, maybe a concept plan or preliminary concept, uh, I'm not sure exactly the total amount of houses. And again, that, that's really, we're getting off topic to what we're talking about today, I think. But I'm not sure, Barney, can you elaborate on that at all? I don't know.
Well, I just, the question came up, I want to make sure that, you know, a, a resident asked a que- uh, someone on Facebook Live asked that question, so I just, you know, wanted to make sure they got recognized. So we're trying to work, it is on Facebook Live too, so we're trying to do two things at one time. At this point in time, there are some comments that have come in on Facebook. Uh, what I'm going to do, uh, like, uh, Leslie said, is I'm going to allow the people to start speaking, because we do have twenty people to speak, that's three minutes, so that, right there is an hour. And then we will answer, maybe some of your questions will be answered at that point in time. By no means are we going to make a decision tonight, so, um, we have a hundred and twenty, we, the planning commission, have a hundred and twenty days to get this back to the town council. We are not in a rush to get this back, um, that's why we're asking for people's comments. And as far as developmental questions, environmental impact, traffic studies, those are part of the development and site plan process. So I'm going to start, um, these are, and these are in, just in the order, I guess, that they came into, the email or were sent to John, so, uh, I'm going to start right now. The first person I have here is Randall Kemp. And when you come on, would you please, uh, restate your name, um, and your address slowly, so we can, um, know if you're within the town limits or not? Thank you. Gina Kemp.
Yes, they could raise their hand, either by pressing star nine on their phone or using their screen to click on raise my hand, so I can find them. I don't see that name listed.
Okay.
Okay, I've got one.
Did you find him?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're unmuted.
Okay, Randall, go ahead and speak, please. I, I think that's not him. I'm going by the list that I have. I don't know who KJ is.
That would be me. My name is Kelly Double.
Kelly?
Yes.
Did you, did you request to speak tonight?
I did.
Okay, I see it. Thank you. Just has to take me a couple minutes.
No problem. I want to thank you all for having me tonight. I guess a couple of questions.
Your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have two. I'm outside of Mount Airy, resident-wise, 8129 Bennett Branch Road, but I have a house in town at 224 Hoff Court.
Okay.
I guess there's several questions. I reviewed the annexation and I, I heard our town engineer state that there would be a possibility of an additional 100,000 gallons of water a day. I reviewed what, what the wells were yielding. And in the annexation, it states that they're hoping to get 152,000 gallons a day. But it talks about 60% for the employment campus, 20% for parcel A, and only 20% for the town development. That yields 30,000 gallons a day for us. It falls far short. In fact, calculating out how many homes that would supply, that is only 100 homes. The other concern I have, and maybe you guys can answer it, I'm very familiar with this fractured rock aquifer that Mount Airy sits over, over top of. And one of the things that has come up is a Ms. Hendricks who spoke to our town engineer while there was a development of the wells over there, or testing of the wells. And she had cloudiness, which that, what tells me is by the flow rate, you guys have hit the aquifer. Now, in this fractured rock aquifer, you have what's known as pipeline fractures. How many town wells, or how many well residents are going to be affected? We already know of one by just you testing. And once you start drawing down the aquifer, how many wells are going to dry up? So I can see the, the great concern of overdrafting groundwater. The other thing is MDE's recharge area. What's, do you have enough open space ground to recharge that aquifer? Because you're talking about 30% of impervious surfaces. And that MDE's formulation is based on 10% impervious surfaces. The other, and I'll end with this. In the minutes of IDA, it spoke of the town changing in the annexation agreement. And Mr. Menich proposed to proceed without, with the prior agreement. And it makes, basically sounds like he's unwilling to negotiate. So annexing this property into the town, what is our guarantee that you guys will actually have, have any say? To me, that's a red flag. If he's already saying that he wants proceed and not willing to sit down at the table and hear Mount Airy's concerns and changes, you know, what, I, I don't know if, if the town would have control over building, you know, what they, what they're looking for. I think the county will, will probably walk over top of the town. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to just compile all the questions and then we'll go over them as, as toward the end. Michael Regal, are you on the list? Could you please raise your hand so we could let you in? There he is. Okay, Mike, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm just here to, to view the proceedings on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board. So I appreciate the time to speak, but I'll, I'll yield to the other speakers who have something to say.
Okay, you live at 608 Prospect Road?
I do.
Okay, that was the timer. Okay, thank you. Next, I have Bob Carr. Can you raise your hand, please, Bob? Okay. We'll go on to the next one then. Julie, is it Rocha? Okay. Mary Ann Costa? There we go. Mary Ann, are you with us?
Please unmute herself.
Okay, do you know how to unmute yourself? Or Gina, do you unmute her?
I did press mute. But she still appears to be muted on her end.
Okay, until she gets unmuted, we'll go on to the next one. Robert McConnell? Can you please raise your hand so the, so Gina can unmute you?
Should I try to run each?
How about, okay, Robert H. I don't know who that is. Did he raise his hand? You'll have to bear with us, there are more people listening than there had to sign up to speak. So I'm trying to go through the list of the people that I have to speak. If at that time, we go through the list and they all have either spoken or have not spoken, I'm going to go ahead and ask those that did not register if they would raise their hand, so we can hear them as well.
Robert looks like he's on mute.
Well, they're both on mute, but they need to, in order to unmute for you to speak, up in the upper right-hand corner of your box, there are three dots. If you would click on those dots, one of them says mute and unmute. So if you unmute yourself, you'll be able to speak with us.
I have a Mac and my unmute is at the left, bottom left-hand corner of my screen, just so you know.
Good to know.
Okay. So Mary Ann, we don't have, Robert never showed up. Susan Delacruz. If you could raise your hand, so you could be unmuted. Okay. Simon Blanchard?
Just raised his hand.
He raised his hand, thanks.
There's a lot of comments coming up though, saying people have no access to be able to unmute on their screen that they're seeing.
Hello, this is Simone Blanchard. Can you hear me?
Yes, Simone.
Okay, thank you. Mount Airy Planning and Zoning Commission members, Mayor Rockenberg, Town Council members, and Carroll County government officials, and Industrial Development Authority Board members present tonight. I would like to thank you for your service. My name is Simone Blanchard. I'm a Carroll County resident and active member of the town of Mount Airy. I've lived on Butler Road for eight years. I am speaking for myself and about 20 other Butler Road residents. I do not support town annexation of the 258-acre property collectively known as the Harrison-Lisher property and owned by the Carroll County Industrial Authority. The joint annexation resolution states, whereas the general public has been invited to some of the work sessions between the IDA, Town Council members, and members of town staff, in which public comments and questions were received. I would like to see agendas and minutes from any past public work sessions related to this property over the last four years in accordance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. I would like to hear from Town Planning Commission members tonight. At this meeting and for the public record, the process for ample public comment of the joint annexation agreement number 202043 that was introduced to the Town Council and referred to the Town Planning Commission for review on August 3, 2020, in the midst of a global pandemic. According to the joint annexation resolution, the entire 258-acre property, including the proposed 80 acres of parkland and the 129 acres of business park and the 43 acres for future development, would be zoned office employment park. This designation permits uses such as hotels with conference centers, biomedical technology facilities, and hospitals, and allows for special exceptions such as the bulk storage of oil, petroleum, gasoline, and similar flammable liquids and compressed gases for the purpose of onsite use. In the proposed annexation agreement, the town would get access to water for the wells on the property for future water needs of town residents. The town would also receive tax revenue from the 129-acre business park that is developed on the land, as well as 80 acres for parkland. The Carroll County Industrial Development Authority would be granted access to the town sewer as part of this deal, something they desperately need from the town in order to develop this land without spending millions of dollars to build a sewage facility on the property. Carroll County residents living in 21771, where the suggested entrance to the business park will be, stand to lose the most from this deal and get the least in return. Planning Commission members, I urge you to provide an unfavorable recommendation to the mayor and town council. Thank you.
An answer to your question Judy about the, I think they had to register so they would be able to unmute. I can't, is that true Gina? Help me out with that.
If they are on this meeting, they should be able to either see on their screen where they can unmute themselves, or like I said, star, star nine to raise their hand.
Okay, thank you. Is Susan Delacruz on the?
Roxanne.
Yes.
I think we, let's ask Tom, but I'm pretty sure Simone would have to submit a PIA for the information she's requesting.
Yes.
And not just doing it through open meetings.
Right, I was just going to do that at the end, but yes. Uh, next I have Sue and Phil, is it Rabel from Butler Road? You could raise your hand, so we could unmute you. I see Phil's name. This is not. Okay, he's on. Can you unmute yourself, Phil? All right, there you go. Phil, state your name and your address, please. Hello? I don't know why we can't hear Phil, but he's on the meeting. I'll go on and come back to you, Phil. Lauren Parr?
Hi, I unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you to everyone who put the meeting together and also allowed for many members of the public to come in. My name's Lauren Parr and I've lived here since 2013. My son attends Mount Airy Middle School now. He's about to start virtually. And I live in Falling Green, 3715 Falling Green Way. We have a wonderful community, very active community. And I just want to remind all of us and all of you how special this community is. And it's special because we have things that no one else has. We have a lot of open space. We have wonderful access to wildlife. We have wonderful access to forested and wetland properties. And all of this development is going to come at a terrible price. We don't want to be Germantown. We don't want to be Gaithersburg. And while we want smart development, there is an, kind of an unending amount of unfilled office space and unfilled development that's already occurred in Carroll County and in Mount Airy. We don't need this development. And this development hurts the people who, who love this county the most and who love this town the most. So I would ask that you really think hard about the development and you really listen to the people who are, are talking to you and trying to get your attention and trying to say this ruins our quality of life in Mount Airy. And it comes at a cost that I think is just far too, too enormous in terms of what we would gain in terms of traffic and pollution and congestion on Route 27. So thank you.
Let's go back. Steve Trice? Hi, Steve, can you give your name and where you live, please?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. My name is Steve Trice. I live at 4066 Butler Road. My property directly backs to the Harrison-Lisher property. And additionally, like Simone, I'm speaking on behalf of many of the other homeowners here on Butler Road who share my concerns and asked us to speak on their behalf tonight. We oppose the annexation and any potential development of the Harrison-Lisher property. We don't believe it to be in the best interest of Mount Airy or its residents. Any development on that property will introduce massive traffic problems, which we are already dealing with. For example, it can take three light cycles for us to be able to turn left onto 27 from Watersville. Adding on to that, the ongoing Center Street Connection and Development Talks that were mentioned earlier, we're looking at catastrophic traffic woes. And what then? More traffic lights, wider highways, which leads to more crime, more police, which we were already talking about earlier, which means more taxes, more water, et cetera. Mount Airy is a small rural community and the citizens I've spoken to personally do not want more growth, especially an employment campus. Despite what the representatives from IDA might think, we do not want to be the next Gaithersburg. People move to Mount Airy to get away from congestion and other development. Have there been studies or reports on the existing vacant business properties around Mount Airy today? It only takes a ride around town to see quite a few. And in today's new world of business moving to virtual employees, why would we want a business park which will likely sit vacant? We believe that without the annexation, the IDA would be forced to abandon plans to develop the property because they'd have to build their own water and sewage treatment facilities, making the development no longer viable. If for some reason, the citizens of Mount Airy were to have a referendum and vote for annexation and development of the Harrison-Lisher property, we Butler Road residents would request conditions to be put on that annexation to ensure much of our way of life goes unimpacted. And I've got a series of concerns that I've listed. I'll spare you those. I emailed those in.
Yeah, I have them.
To the commission. But the last one I'd like to hit on is that if that were to be annexed, we're concerned about the location of the proposed business park on the property. The way the proposal exists today, an 80-acre business park is proposed to be directly behind all of the attached properties on Butler Road. This is detrimental to our property values, will cause 24-hour noise and light pollution, and will cause an increase in crime. We urge the town to consider swapping the proposed business park location with the proposed parkland location slated for the northern portion of the property. Carroll County and the IDA are dangling water acquisition and potential future tax revenue in front of the town to get them to annex the property. And once the property is annexed and rezoned as an employment campus, the IDA will be able to build their commercial properties. We believe the town is blinded by their thirst for water and tax revenue and not taking into account the traffic issues this will bring, the property value decline, potential well issues for the homes on Butler Road. And we question if the town really needs this water to satisfy its current situation. Additionally, the middle of a pandemic is not the time to be making such critical decisions about the nature of our beautiful town, while citizens, as we've seen tonight, cannot effectively join together to voice their opinions. We keep being told by those in the know that this is going to happen with or without our consent and with or without the annexation. Please say no to the annexation and let the IDA figure out something else to do with and let the IDA figure out something else to do with their property. Your neighbor, Steve Trice. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have is Terry Baker. If you could raise his hand so we could let him in.
Terry, you're unmuted.
There he is, okay. Terry, can you hear us? Do you have a microphone and is your audio up? Is your volume up? Hello? I'm gonna come back to you Terry. There's one person who said that she was having problems with her connection, but she's on now. That was Mary Ann Costa. She has her hand raised. Gina? Okay.
I'm having a hard time finding her.
She's right MC, she's, well, she's right after Simone.
Right at the top of the attendees list Gina.
Yeah, she's close to the top.
There's also a call in number that people can call in on with that same Zoom invite that was sent out to them. If they're having problems through their computer, they could call into that number as well.
Oh, Terry has already said he's not gonna speak at this time.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead Mary Ann.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Costa. Thank you for taking my call. I'm sorry, I had technical difficulties. I live over in Falling Green neighborhood and I'm opposed to annexation and I'm opposed to the development of the property. And the reason why is because I feel that the thought process so far has not been in depth enough. I believe that there's gonna be an environmental impact to the wetlands and the wildlife in the area. There's also gonna be a traffic impact. Trying to make a left hand turn heading south. Lauren, can you mute yourself? And then, there's a traffic impact coming down on 27. It's very dangerous. We know we have fatalities stopping in on that road and further development will cause more risk for our residents. I also am concerned about the disruption to a community balance. There's housing, residential communities all around there and it's gonna cause an imbalance. None of us moved to Carroll County to live next to an office building. We all moved here to enjoy this beautiful surrounding area. If we wanted to live next to office buildings, we would have chosen Howard County, Montgomery County, or Frederick County. There's also a lack of demand for office space. Through this pandemic, we've all learned how to be able to work virtually and we're doing it really well. As of the second quarter of 2020, the Maryland office vacancy had already declined by 14.4%. I expect this to be a further downgrade in the way that we're seeing a decline in retail. Certain more to businesses will continue to decline. So investing any amount of money to build more offices is just gonna end up with more vacant properties. I'm also concerned about the water. If 200,000 gallons are pushed, pulled out of there, what impact is that gonna have to the residents on Butler Road? What impact would that have to Falling Green? Are we gonna be left on properties with dry wells? And what's gonna happen to our property values? I can't imagine anybody's gonna move to Carroll County and say, gosh, I'm excited to move next to an office park. You're gonna end up reducing property values and that's gonna in turn reduce the tax assessments and that's gonna in turn reduce the real estate property taxes coming in. My last point is location. Everyone says in real estate, it's location, location, location. And I've never seen anybody get off I-70 and say, I'd like to drive seven minutes north on 27 and dream that there would be an office park there. If we were gonna put any office parks in Mount Airy, they should be closer to I-70. So those are my concerns. I appreciate you listening and taking the time. In the future, I'd appreciate if there were more signs that could help to alert the public rather than us hearing it by word of mouth from residents on Butler Road. The residents in Falling Green only heard about this because of the nice friends that we have on Butler Road. So more transparent communication would be appreciated. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next I have, I'm making sure I'm trying to double back. Brandon Rakes.
I actually didn't have anything that I needed to listen and agree with a bunch of the comments. I'm not for the annexation, but that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Christine Smith. Are you there? Christine?
I'll see your name on the list.
Okay. The next person then I have is DJ, is it Pazey?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. I've been on Butler Road at 3787 since 1986. I built my home here myself with my own hands. I have my husband's too. And I have worked in development for years. I know it's gonna happen. When? I might be long dead. But some precautions need to be made in the annexation to cover people because what happens 20 years down the road? If it's not protected, people could lose their water. And it's a very important issue. I recommend that if you go ahead with the annexation, after considerable considerations, that you have something in there that says some, I don't know legal ease. So whoever writes up the legal things can figure out how to write such a thing. But if neighboring properties lose water, that the town reduce their consumption or offer those people hookup fees, hook up to water with no fees. And I'm suggesting that in the annexation because it could be many, 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 many years. Okay? And the issue on wetlands is a big issue. There's a big wetlands area there. I don't know. I don't know if you don't see my picture, I guess. So there's a large wetlands area. About a third of the way around the property is all wetlands. And I know from working in the industry for years, there has to be a hundred foot buffer from that. And I also know that an industrial or business park should have a buffer also in addition to that. So you're knocking down a lot of property by doing that. The other buffer should be so that there is less noise and there's one over at Twin Ridge. You'll notice between the industrial area and the housing, there is a large berm that protects the homes from the industrial area. So they don't hear all the noise. But I know from living on Butler Road, I can hear 70 noise. I can hear 27 noise if I have my windows open. Excuse me. The light pollution, oh my gosh, after Walmart could put in, we all could see it. All the way over here even. Those are considerations I want you to look into before you say yea or nay. But I would like to see some addendums into the annexation about water and wetland protection. Yes, I know the state has wetland protections. The counties have wetland protections. But the neighbors want to have some also. We want this area to be conserved equitably for everyone. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Maria McGilaway.
Hi, I'm Maria McGilaway. I'm getting a backlash here. I will yield to the next person. Pretty much Steve has said exactly how I feel regarding this development being pushed through really fast, considering we didn't know anything about it until now. I did know that this was, I thought, originally planned for near Route 70 over near, I think it's Bennett Branch Road. And it it got nixed evidently. It was stopped there. And now it's in my neck of the woods. I live off of Watersville Road. And I believe that the Dobbs property that I think it was your engineer was speaking about was in relation to Nottingham getting water, that it would come from the Dobbs property. I'm not sure if I understood that correctly. But I evidently, off of Shady Side Drive and directly in that Dobbs property region, and I'm totally against this. Because what's it gonna do to our wells? I'm completely against this, is all I wanna say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next I have is Jeremy Gordon.
Yes, hello. I'm actually getting, hi, how are you? Thank you for all of us two boys. I'm actually brand new to the area. Moving here from Brookville, Maryland. And I just wanna kind of, you know, speak to what everybody else is saying. I moved to Mount Airy and brought my family and my little kids here to get away from all that crap. And I'm telling you all right now, if you haven't lived down in Montgomery County or anything else, you don't want any more people coming to your amazing little town and your amazing little city. I can tell you that right now for whatever reason, for any economical growth and I'm in finance. It's just not worth it. And I really don't know all the details, so I can't speak upon them. I'm just learning about them now. But you really don't wanna lose what you guys have out here for the benefit of a few. Can tell you that right now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you Jeremy. Next I have is Ken, is it Collison? Ken, if you can unmute yourself. Look at the upper right hand corner of your box. There's three dots. Open the dots and then one of them will say unmute. Gina, can you unmute him?
I have on my end.
Okay.
Again, appreciate everybody's patience with this. It's, I think it's working very well overall, allowing the community to be able to speak. Again, so hopefully we can figure out what the glitches are for people, why they can't unmute themselves.
Yeah.
Maybe we just call on somebody else, Roxanne.
Yeah, I am. The last person I have is Lynn Galetti. Okay Lynn, if you can unmute yourself, we'll be able to hear you. For some reason it's not working. I don't know why Gina.
Well, we'll work through it. I guess, I'm not sure exactly either. Nor does Gina, I'm sure. Seems like there's some feedback.
You just hover your cursor over the bottom of your screen. There should be a little menu that you can click on unmute.
Lynn, I know that you typed in a chat message before. Do you wanna try to do that? Because we're not hearing you.
So Roxanne in chat, while Lynn is unmuting, we do have somebody, Jill Mannion, who said that she emailed in to speak and I guess she didn't make your list.
I'm just getting the list for John. I'm just now in the process of going through that.
Are we able to open it to her while we?
Yes, if she has her hand raised, she would be able to be unmuted.
It looks like Lynn is unmuted, so she should be able to speak.
I'm sorry, you asked me to unmute. I stepped away. Sorry about that.
Oh, okay. Well, you were scheduled to speak, so I wanted to give you the chance to speak if there was anything you needed, wanted to say.
Nope, we're just, I just wanted to let the public know that Streets and Roads appreciates everything planning and zoning does. And like planning and zoning, we're here for people if they have any concerns. Thank you for everything you guys do and town staff.
Thank you, you too.
And town staff who a lot of them have been working 12 hours now, so thank you.
Thanks. Jill Mannion, if you can unmute yourself, we can hear what you have to say.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you Chairperson Hemphill and Vice Chairperson Butts and all the members of the Planning Commission and others that are listening tonight. Like Stephen Simone, I speak for myself and about 20 other residents on Butler Road, where we've tried to join our voices together to discuss the overall significant and growing concern regarding the proposed annexation of the Harrison Liger property and the terms of the proposed annexation agreement. Butler Road residents will be disproportionately impacted by an office development on the subject property. This annexation will result in a rezoning of the property from low density residential and conservation to office, park, employment zoning. In the agreement, there is no consideration given to how rezoning this property from residential use to commercial use will impact residents joining the property. Further, as currently written, the Office Park Employment Zoning District provides a minimal 50 foot setback from a residential property boundary. For a rezoning that would require a county zoning waiver due to the 50% plus increase in density, the significant impact for residents should be addressed in the agreement to put the developer on notice that minimizing impacts to local residents is a priority for the town. Yet not even the waiver itself is contemplated in the proposed annexation agreement. If the county review agencies deny the waiver, there's a five year waiting period before the property can be developed. What is the point of the waiting period if the town's hands are tied to even contemplate an alternative use for the land? Given the topography of the site, the visual impacts as well as light and noise pollution will be significant to our Butler Road residents. There will be difficulty with crime, traffic, flooding, which is a problem for several residents already in the past. While these are usually typical concerns that a planning commissioner will always hear when there is a proposal for new development, in this case, how the land is to be used and the density anticipated is part of the overall annexation decision. It's concerning that the town is contemplating locking itself into a new office park as the only possible use of the property while the office and light industrial real estate market is overall struggling. Many similar facilities in more populous areas are either under leased or must now be repurposed to allow for restaurant, retail, churches, recreation uses. In a time when those companies are struggling or shuttering, why do we wanna lock ourselves into a new office employment park? I think it's also important that the public is given the opportunity to understand why the land is allocated in the manner that it is in the proposal. A portion of the site is to be granted as open space, but it's unclear why that portion of the site was selected for that use. This land and the land reserved for the future development is closest to the ridge lie sheer traffic signal and existing road infrastructure. In the meantime, the area of the site with no existing access to a public road is the subject of the majority of development. is the subject of the majority of development. Finally, it's clear that the development of water resources for the town and the availability of sewer from the town are the main drivers of this proposed annexation. I think it is important for the public to be given clear, direct answers on how the IDA would reasonably develop the land without the annexation, without significant capital cost to the county. Is the town giving away too much in this agreement? Because the county and the IDA are threatening to develop it with or without our input? The immense reduction of fees for infrastructure and limited town inspections on certain infrastructure should at least give a serious pause to all the decision-makers on this. And the residents of this town should be given a clear understanding why these terms are necessary as part of the agreement. The estimated water and sewer allotment for 38 buildings with three units per building will require significant water and sewer capacity that will be responsible to the town long after the IDA and the county have moved on. I'll conclude my comments with the statement that while Butler Road residents are not within the incorporated town limits, we are proud residents of Mount Airy that support our businesses, our schools, and our community. We hope that the love we have for Mount Airy is returned and that we are continued to be given the opportunity to weigh in on this important town decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. I have two other people that would like to speak. Diane, is it Purney? If you could raise your, there she is.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. I'm sorry for your frustration with this whole business, Mr. Chairperson.
That's okay.
I have a lot to say, so I'm going to talk very quickly, and I hope people listen very fast. Good evening. My name is Diane Purney. I live at 4044 Butler Road. I have recently sent emails to the Town of Mount Airy council members, the mayor, and the director of Planning and Zoning with some of my concerns about this annexation. In that email, I stated that I was for the annexation. I hereby rescind my backing of this annexation and want to do so publicly.
Okay.
I am currently an administrator for the Facebook group Harrison Lysier Annexation Citizens Discussion. This group has grown in size in the past 10 days since we created it. We have been trying and continue to try to gain truthful and accurate information from every resource available to us, but have found quite a bit of half-truths and misleading information from both sides of the annexation. I've lived on Butler Road since 2006 and in Mount Airy for 25 years. This has become my hometown. My current home facts directly against where the employment campus is wanting to be developed. We, the voting citizens living on Butler Road, have been told by both the IDA, Mr. Dirt Spa, and the town officials that there will be development of this property and that there's little we can do to stop it. I think this is a strong-arm tactic to get us to back down and agree to this annexation. This land is currently zoned as low-density residential and conservation. Without rezoning, the only thing that can be built there is homes. How can the IDA afford to put their own sewage and water waste treatment plant and water filtration system for this plan without tapping into the Mount Airy system? Water waste treatment plants are not cheap, and where can it be put on the property? Carroll County wants to recoup the monies that they paid for the land because of their missteps. The people of Carroll County should not have to pay for their mistakes. I do understand the need of Mount Airy to access water. The town's water woes are directly caused by overdevelopment without looking at the infrastructure needed to sustain this type of growth. It is not the problem of the citizens outside of the town to fix the problems that the town itself has created. It has been looking at this water source for as long as I can remember, but what is the cost? Let me tell you, the cost is slightly under $2 million to the town to develop this land. The proposed area used for employment park is assuming 38 buildings, allowing for up to five stories. But we've been told that these buildings will only be three stories. That impinges on the current residence rate to a quiet environment. It becomes a nuisance with noise, pollution, fumes, trash, dust, vermin, and lights. It's disturbing our current mental tranquility. It also interferes with the quiet, peaceful, and pleasant use of our properties. In reading through all the documents, nowhere does it provide us with any planned setbacks, screens, or buffers to mitigate the impact on our neighborhood. Dumpsters and service areas should be required to cause no more than 55 decibels of sound at our property line. With the development of a three-story building, these will look straight into our backyards and homes and do constitute a privacy issue that a six-foot privacy fence will not block out. We have issues with water impacting our current wells. And as we all know, an aquifer only has so much water, and once we put an impervious surface on it, that water will decrease. I've spoken to MDE, and they have been told that these wells will affect our current wells. I also have issues, environmental impact issues. We've been told there will only be one egress, and that would be up at Lysier. And then we were told from the Town of Mount Airy, no, it's going to be on 27 and Watersville. Everybody has a different opinion on what's going to be happening here. In closing, can we reconsider where we want this town to go? I do not believe an employment center is actually needed or wanted by the people of Mount Airy. I do believe that the people of Mount Airy do want our water. But are they willing to do so at such a cost? And while I'm here, I believe with all my heart that this is being pushed during the pandemic, so the public comment cannot be heard as it would in normal times. I've been told by numerous people that this has been in the works for years. Okay, so why are we pushing it when people can't have an opportunity to be heard? For example, this meeting, it was difficult to get to. It was not really going to be public until we pushed. It's also on the town's Facebook page, but hidden deep down. So many people were calling me and asking me how to get to this meeting. Is that what we consider public? How do we get public opinion when meetings are so very hard to attend and be part of? Also, I was told that anyone wanting to speak needed to contact Mr. Breeding. What is that? That's not public opinion. There are other people on these calls that want to be heard. Just voicing my opinion, I do thank you for your time. And in closing, I would like to be able to find if there are any environmental, traffic, water, or public opinion studies that are available to the public over this issue.
Okay, thank you, Diane. There's one other person I have. Suzanne, is it Cannoli? I'm sorry if I'm butchering your names. There she is.
There we go. Hello, thank you.
Hi.
It's me, I'm back again.
That's okay.
Thank you for redirecting my comments to the correct part of the agenda. My name is Suzanne Cannoli, and I live 2904 Clear Hill Lane, up near Route Road. So I'm outside of the area that we're talking about today, but I am very much a part of small-town Mount Airy. And that's what I would like to address tonight. I was in the auditorium, I believe it was in 2000, at Century High School, when the master plan was being discussed, and the auditorium was packed with people. I believe it was standing room only, and people were waiting outside, when we fought against redevelopment and a complete disruption of the lifestyle of Carroll County. And that was shot down, thankfully. At the time, I wiped the sweat off my brow and said, yes, we won. And now here we are again, in that same place. I don't really see this from my perspective, because I don't live near the property as an issue of water or, as Diane said, as an issue of noise or, you know, not being able to see above a three-story building. What I really see this as is a question of values. That, I've lived in Mount Airy now for over 35 years, and the values that this community holds is what brings us together as a small-town community. We've seen it on the news every night, that places are going crazy. We have the values in Mount Airy that are opposite of that. And I want to hold on to those values with everything I have. We live in a quiet community where people can have parades for 4th of July and Memorial Day, although we don't have 4th of July in Mount Airy. But, you know, we have the Fireman's Carnival and things like that, that we want to hold on to. And bringing an employment campus for the idea that, oh, it's going to be great because people that live in Mount Airy can work in Mount Airy. Well, it's not going to happen. What's going to happen is it's going to bring people from outside of Mount Airy into our community, and then they're going to want more things, and then more things will grow, and then we will lose our small town forever. And I really don't want to see that happen. That's why I was so compelled to join this meeting tonight and really wanted to have my voice heard. And hopefully, other people will stand up. I see there's only 58 people on the Facebook meeting. And I'm hoping to share and keep spreading the news that this is happening so that more voices in Mount Airy can express their opinions. I thank you very, very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I respect all of your time and commitment to our town and very much appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Those are all the people that I had sent a message in the chat that wanted to speak. I'm going to go through it one more time. Council members, while I'm doing this, Leslie, do you want to start? I know you said, let's wait and see the comments, and then if have any questions.
Are you done with everyone? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I'm going through now. I can't, there's questions that need to be answered, but I'm going to go through those two as well.
Well, my, I guess my questions, it sort of had to do with, some are similar questions to what people asked. But when I was looking through this over the weekend, in determining, by comparing what a, if the zoning, if the property is not annexed, it's a residential 40,000, meaning each lot must be a minimum of 40,000 square feet. And out of 258-plus acres, you could have, I guess this is one of my questions, you could have 280-plus potential residences. So my first question is, would the water on, so let's say it maintains its current zone, would the wells and the water on the property be enough water for 280-plus residences? Or would there be fewer? I'm just trying to compare, like, what would it be if it stays currently zoned compared to what the proposal is?
And it wasn't annexed into the town?
Right.
Okay.
I don't know if Barney knows that.
Do you have an answer, or any light, can shine any light on that?
280 single-family homes would require about 70,000 gallons a day, more than the ample.
Okay. So we figure, depending on the topography, so maybe you couldn't quite have 280. We have those other requirements, like open space. So I guess in terms of impact, can anyone, like maybe Mr. Frank? Or Barney, compare the impact of, to see both the residents who spoke and to the town and to traffic, comparing if there were a residential development of this size compared to what we're proposing with the OPE?
Frank, can you take that? Well, it's, the only thing I can qualify is, compared to 280 homes, if this was totally developed, the traffic will be greater. Because there has been no studies done of the number of occupants for these buildings and the traffic flow in and out of this entire project, there's no way to project at this point what the difference will be. That will come later.
And I have to admit that, I mean, I've been on the Planning Commission for eight, nine, 10, I don't know, probably eight or nine years. And I agree that there's been minimal transparency with the IDA. I mean, I have, even someone who's kind of has some access to information, I have not had any understanding or information about what was going on with this property. So can you answer in terms of what some of these folks have posed about, for example, why does the IDA want Mount Airy to annex the property rather than just developing the property itself? Even if it were to change the zone, because the county could change the zone. I mean, it's got its own employment campus zone now. So why does the county and the IDA want the town to annex the property rather than just change the zone and develop it itself?
Well, it was the thought that the, since this property abuts the municipal property line, that annexation to the town would be most beneficial for the town for all kinds of reasons, and the town would want to reap most of the benefit from it, that they could.
Can I interrupt? I've been on planning for like 13 years, and so I was there when Isaac Minash came. I was also there when Isaac Minash took town council out to dinner. And so I've been around a long enough time, and one of the things that was said was that we owed the county because they built us a school. And that was underscored, that, you know, we owed them. I'm just going to tell you.
I've never heard this, so this is news to me completely, so I don't know anything about it.
You weren't on, you weren't there, okay?
Yep.
I'm telling you what was before your time, when Isaac Minash and company came to town.
Thank you, Lindy. Any other?
Wait, 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 Mr. Dirt Spa hadn't finished. What he, my question had to do with, why does Carroll County want the town to annex the property? What Mr. Dirt Spa was explaining was why they supposedly thought the town wanted to annex the property. I want to know why, from the county's perspective and the IDA's perspective, why did they want Mount Airy to annex the property rather than developing the property themselves, including if they wanted to change the zoning and they can have their, you know, and develop it themselves? That's the answer I want. Why does the county want the town to annex the property? Not for the, not, don't tell me about the benefits to the town. Tell me about why the county wants it. But for their own purposes. That's my question.
Well, the county will get tax revenue out of it that they wouldn't get otherwise if it was residential. And the use of the property being toward the commercial side is a larger tax benefit to the county than residents are. Residents are not cost-effective to the tax base.
Right, but why does the county have to, why does the town have to annex the property for the county? Why can't the county just change the zoning and get its tax benefit that way?
Well, our first attempt at this point was to send it to the town's way of offering, if you will, giving the town the opportunity to take the benefits of it rather than the county doing it on its own. I would think that is a, if you will, a golden egg in some respects. Not completely, but it's a boost to the town in various ways, I would think. I would think that, um, you know, why not have Mount Airy benefit from this? Uh, and not just the county.
Let me just, um, so if I understand though, even if the county changed the zoning to office, uh, development or, uh, employment campus, you would still need Mount Airy's, um, hookup for water and sewer to be able to complete that? Is that, did I understand that correctly or not?
You did.
Okay, so.
But they wouldn't have access to it.
I don't, I don't, Judy, with the, with their water that they have right now, um, they could do it, I think they could build their own water. Uh, they wouldn't need to come into the town.
They need water sewage, sewage treatment.
Well, if the developer would do it, they would build it themselves. They could build it on that property.
That's, but that costs a lot more.
True, it does. It does.
You're talking, and I know the county's put a ton of money into buying that property, trying to salvage the whole issue with previous developer. Um, I, I just have to agree with Leslie at this point. It doesn't sound, I'm not sure what the benefit is to us at this point either, so.
Okay. Anyone else have anything on the commission?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and raise this point because it's something that we have been trying to reinforce with both Frederick and Carroll County for many, many years. And that's our preference to have a buffer area around the town. And not have county development right up to our town boundary. We want that space. We want the opportunity to have that balance with nature that's so beautiful in our area. It remains to be considered in, in much more detail. Um, perhaps the original thoughts of the, the possibility, the opportunity for additional, uh, office park or industrial development at, at a very, very low density with sufficient buffers, uh, as another way to, uh, improve our commercial retail revenue share versus our residential share. It's, it's very, very unbalanced right now. Um, and of course, some additional bit of, of water, uh, to support what we'd love to do over time, over decades, uh, in terms of some possible infill is, uh, is a possibility as well, but not at the endangerment of existing residents. Um, but the thing that I come back to, because every few years we have to reinforce it with the counties, the county planners, is our preference is for the counties not to build right up to the Mount Airy town line. And we're, and we're going to talk some more about that. Even if we, you know, chose ultimately to go forward with the annexation, we'd feel the same way about Carroll or Frederick.
And I would just add that now with COVID-19, you know, again, it's been said all over and over. This isn't, I mean, office parks now are like malls. Close to them. So we've been working on this thing so long that now it's a fossil.
Become obsolete. Yep.
Um, that's true. I travel around a lot. I do see a lot of open space, of vacant. Um, that's a concern. I don't want to see any more vacant, vacant office space in town of Mount Airy. It's not good for the economics.
We have, we have a lot of empty commercial space as it is right now. And, you know, I don't know if any market analysis has been done, but certainly I can't imagine that there's a huge need for new commercial space when we've got a lot of empty people sitting here.
I mean, some commercial people, I have someone in my office and I asked him about this and he said, there is a slowdown on commercial, on office space now, but now it's, it hasn't declined. It, it's not still declining. It kind of has dropped off and they're finding that, yeah, it is nice to work from home, but you still need someplace to go. So maybe not as much, uh, office space as started, but that is, you know, so that you would have, um, office shared space. But I'm a little concerned about that. Um, I'm going to start, um, Tom, um, Ms. Simone asked about, she wanted some information. Um, and it, she does have to request that through the, uh, Public Information Act. Can you explain that? I don't see, and maybe he left. Oh, no, there he is up in the corner.
Actually, Roxanne, there's somebody's got a, a question in the comments that they wanted Lindy to clarify. Uh, it's, uh, Heather Hobbs, Michael.
I think we should allow them to speak.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, but.
I'm here. Heather Hobbs, Michael is here on the Zoom. I would love to speak. Lindy, you made a statement about the, a council having dinner. And you also made a statement that there was a payback because of school being built. Which council are you referring to? Town council or county council?
This was town council. Um, this is several years ago. Um, obviously Mayor, Mayor Pat was there. Um, it was talking about Harrison LaSheer. Isaac Minash was there. Former council member Peter Helt was there. I was invited as chair of planning. Um, Jason Sprier, Sprier, who's now town, he was just town, town council member. Um.
So you're saying that there was a dinner that was held that, um, was it ex parte or was there quorum held? Where people met and discussed?
This is before ex parte. This was a conversation about Harrison LaSheer. And then again, there was nothing about, this is a payback. This is a dinner talking about where we're going. And this was years ago.
Mm-hmm. I'm uncomfortable with your comments, ma'am. Um, first of all, you said council, you said years ago. It made it seem as though it was an ex parte. Ex parte has actually been in, um, has been in within our, our town council and government since I can remember, which was 1975.
Ex parte was not in the planning commission, so I'm just going to.
I think what.
It's in Robert's Rules of Order.
I think you're talking about Open Meetings Act. Are you talking about Open Meetings Act?
No, absolutely. Your statement made it seem as though council met and it was something that was, um, not quite legitimate. So I was a little bit uncomfortable with that. I wanted you to clarify what that was and who was present. So thank you. I appreciate that.
So Heather, I'm going to concur with what you just said, what Lindy's comment, comment made me very uncomfortable.
Extremely uncomfortable. As someone whose father served on council for 36 years and who's been involved with this since the very beginning, extremely uncomfortable with, with what was that innuendo, inappropriate, unprofessional, and there needs to be an apology. And I'll take that publicly, ma'am. I would take that publicly, ma'am.
I'm confused about whether you, sorry, go ahead Roxanne.
Heather, um, I appreciate what you're saying. I understand your compassion. Um, I, we need to.
You may certainly move on. My, my point is noted. I will take that public apology. Thank you.
Who are you, who are you looking for the apology from?
From Lindy for making, for making a statement that caused questionable, um, I'm so upset right now.
Wait, wait, wait. You don't think her statement was true? So you're, or was it, I'm confused now.
No, I didn't say it was not true. The way that it came out made it sound as though council members met with people that had a dinner to discuss that this was a payback for a school that was built in our community, which I find troubling and inappropriate. That's all I'm saying.
If that's what happened, yes, it would be. So maybe.
It's not what happened. And okay, misinterpreted. What I'm saying, there's two, what I was told was that this was supposed to be, we were supposed to take to Harrison LaSheer because we got the schools. That's another way history conversation. Second thing is then we had years, again, years before that was we did have a dinner and that was open records. It was nothing, it was discussed when Isaac was there. And again, our mayor and Peter Helt and Jason and myself and another town council member who's no longer here, talking about where we go. Because we've been sitting on, we've been talking about this at that time for like seven years. So I am sorry if you misinterpreted what I'm saying. There were two different conversations and one when I was just beginning of a chair and second, actually dinner I attended.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that clarification. My phone is blowing, was blowing up with texts, not just because other people took it the same way. So that's why I came into the Zoom.
I want to make a clarification.
Thank you.
Different, again, way before I started town council, I'm sorry, planning commission. And second, just a dinner with, which was open to anybody. Everyone was invited.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time. You guys get back to the business at hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Heather.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
Roxanne, we do have a couple of citizens that do have their hand raised. Did you want to?
Yes.
Let them speak?
Yes, thank you. Cause I'm, I'm scrolling through the comments as well. So, um, yes, I will say one thing. Uh, there was a comment from Delegate Boucher, uh, to, to all the, um, to everybody. He said that he, um, I've got to find it so I can read it right. Um, he said that he is listening and he's, uh, listening to all your concerns. Uh, and he will, um, uh, work on answering your concerns. I can't find it. Let's go ahead with those people that have their hand raised. Do you have someone, Gina?
Hi, this is Diane Parry then.
Yes, Diane.
I just want to say, the I D A has been, um, meeting with Mount Airy, uh, council people for years. And it's not only been in council meetings and things have been done in the past and in, and I'm assuming in the future because I've dealt with I D A now for the past five or six years. And they don't do things, um, on the record and they're quiet and they go around the back way and they don't tell you the full truth. And I just want everyone to know that that's the kind of dealings we're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it is, um, this is, um, this is, let me read this real quick before I lose it. This is Commissioner Boucher and I am following this, you and hope to meet with the citizen soon. Okay. The other person that had their hand up, Gina?
Vanessa, um, you have been recognized and are unmuted. If you can unmute on your end, you can go ahead and speak.
There she is. Okay, hi Vanessa.
Hi, thank you so much for, um, letting me talk last minute. Um, I am a resident over on 3719 Falling Green Way. Um, so we back up directly to the conservation land. Um, we just found out in our community two days ago that any of this stuff was happening between Life Man Road and Carroll County when, wanting to put the, um, the, the employment buildings, the employment camp, campus up, um, right behind the property. Um, and I, I mean, I have to say, we're, my husband and I on our, our, on our second round, living in Mount Airy. We used to live off of, on Hop Court in town limits. Um, we moved back out here to raise our family, to get some country, country living. Um, and very disappointed that they're trying to develop, you know, a few miles out of town, not even close to I-70. Um, I have worked in construction for 17 years. Um, there are no studies, no environmental, no traffic, no, uh, nothing, no housing studies going on before they're trying to rezone, um, which in, in my world, that's unheard of. Um, and I really hope that the town council helps us not to develop. And I, and I know the water issue when we lived here 10 years ago was a big deal. Um, even when, when we were in town limits. Um, when these developers for the residential communities build the residential communities, they need to be responsible for the town, you know, for the town water. Not the people outside of the town limits. We're on well, we're on septic. You know, we moved in, six months later, our well pump and our pressure tank, tanked. Um, and we had to pay $6,000 to replace it. We did not have the, you know, the town facilities. There is nothing we will get out of this except for having a view of an office park behind us. When we came out here specifically to be outside of town limits. And we specifically said that we wanted to be in Mount Airy because it was small town living. And, you know, we love it. We love it out here. And, you know, I hope that we all can figure this out and not make the residents outside of town, um, have a view of an industrial park. Um, I, and I appreciate you letting me speak right now. And, um, council, council people, please, you know, think of the people outside of your, your city that we still support the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one more quick, uh, scan Gina, see if there's anyone else that has their hand up.
Hey Roxanne, just to point out, there are two questions in the Q and A box, not in the chat box.
Okay.
Um, if you go over there.
I see.
One is around I D A members and if you can get a list of those, because there doesn't seem to be, uh, that, that people can't find that. And what does fully develop all the 40 acres, that additional 40 acres?
Roxanne, can I, can I speak real quick?
Yes, John, you can.
So I just wanted to let know, let the citizens know that, you know, this, this property was posted in two locations on the 12th of August. It also has been posted on our town website. It was sent out to anybody that's on our Facebook link, uh, that these meetings will be occurring. This annexation resolution would be discussed. The APFO requirements for the police would be discussed. Again, all this information has been out there. A lot of these people that are talking, are talking about parcel 20, which is the EC-13-2020-0030. That's the industrial park or EC zoning that they're talking about, not the Harrison LaSheer. So we have to be really careful, um, that we're not getting the two items confused. So I think there's some misunderstanding exactly what's being talked about and discussed this evening related to this meeting and the annexation resolution through the town.
I mean, I'm pretty sure that, that Vanessa Berno who just spoke, um, was talking about what, what John's saying, the parcel 20 that is not being considered to be annexed into Mount Airy. Um, and that is, and that is zoned conservation as opposed to the Harrison LaSheer, which is zoned residential 40,000. Um, and they, they are contiguous with each other and it's a little bit confusing, but yeah.
And they actually are not contiguous.
Oh, they're not contiguous now.
There is another parcel between Falling Green and the parcel number 20 for the EC zoning request through the county.
Right.
I, we, we don't sign a property that's outside the corporate limits. I made sure that we made the public inside town. The property was signed. Again, we made sure that the Facebook was notified. Anybody who has the email request for information related to town events and town stuff, especially on the planning commission site, they would have gotten a blast that pictures of the signage. It had my contact information on it. I was not, um, trying to limit, uh, the people coming into the meeting. I've been very generous with giving out the information. Again, this is a new platform for the webinar, except for a couple of glitches, which I'm not sure exactly what they were. Hopefully we can figure that out. Uh, I think it's been a very effective meeting, allowing the citizens, the 35 or plus attendees to be able to have their voice heard. So I think it's been working out very well. But I just want to make sure we're not getting the two items confused.
Um, thank you, John. Okay, Sarah, you have your hand raised and I think you're unmuted.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, yeah, I just want to say that I agree with a lot of the people here on Botler Road. I, we live at 3801 Botler Road. And, um, I just wanted to add in addition to all that's been talked about. And I just wanted to add in addition to all that's been talked about. That a lot of the small local shops that are here in town have really been affected by the outside. Office buildings and big box places and large high end, which we have heard is what is going to go in this employment campus. Is, what we've heard is for high end. Kind of stores possibly. And, and we just don't know if it's going to be or not. And that's not something that's in our control, I don't think, once it goes into annexing. So I think that's just one of our concerns is that there is not the need for the office park. But also, I just see. That the local businesses are really going to be affected by this if they're not already being affected. So. That's all I have to add, but I do agree with not moving forward with the annexation to employment campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry Roxanne, I just wanted to clarify. Employment campus is for the parcel 20 that is not adjacent to the town and not adjacent to Falling Green. We're putting OPE over this future annexation parcel, not employment campus. Two different, two different items.
There's one other, Frank, there's one other person, never mind, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead Frank.
Oh. Just for some clarification purposes, is, is the OPE zoning classification available on the Mount Airy website?
Yes, it is an ordinance. It's not on the website. You, you. You have to go through, through the code. You go to Mount Airy code and it sets you to another link, which has all of our codes and ordinances in it. I was going to speak a little bit to the ordinance about what it says. It says nothing about putting big box stores in there, number one.
And my, yeah, that's mostly my point is there's been a bunch of misstatements about what's going in the OPE zone if, if this is annexed. And I would think it could help some of these people with their concerns if maybe that was posted somehow. So it's a little easier to find for those people to read and understand. That's all. Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So number one, I'll address Mr. Durswall's comment there. We have read the new zoning. We're not mistaken about what's allowed in there. What might be developed there could be different from what's allowed. What's allowed in there is up to five story buildings, according to the OPE zoning, amongst other things. Simone Blanchard was 100% correct. Number two, Mr. John Breeding, you mentioned that the property was posted. I want to clarify that. There were two very small, one by maybe two signs posted on that property. One on Elijah Road facing the residents of Jack's Court, nothing facing Route 27. And one on the very north end of Botler Road where nobody would even have even seen it unless they were going to, up to Runcles Road. So it's a little disingenuous to say that we posted the property and all of these other things. When, you know, I've seen larger signs for the Chili Fest in town. So let's be clear about how this was posted and what was put out there. And a lot of folks are just hearing about this just now.
Okay, Steve, let me say, John, let me speak. Let me say a few things. There are certain ways, there are certain ways that we post. And it doesn't go, it doesn't differentiate in size because of the size of the acreage. I do agree this is a large plot of property. It has been talked about for, yes. So the posting, and the posting only comes like 30 days before, is the only time that it comes. I understand that the people out of town have not heard about this. However. I encourage you to keep looking at the, if you had, I don't want to sound disingenuous myself, but. We have had discussions and updates on the last two or three council meetings about this. And there is information on the website. I know sometimes the website is hard to, to navigate, but there has been some information on it. Maybe not as much as should be. We're learning and that's why we're asking you to listen. I will also say, and never would we do this. But there are some municipalities that do not let people outside of their town limits to even come in and speak. And we're not going to do that. We allow you to speak. So if we can help you to get the information quicker, please, you've suggested maybe larger signs. We'll look into that. We have 120 days to make this decision. We are not going to make this decision tonight, but we need to hear all of your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Mrs. Hemphill. I would say one other thing. I came to the last town council meeting and I spoke, you were there.
Yeah.
The Harrison-Lijer annexation was actually on the agenda and I spoke about it, but there was nary a mention of this in the Mount Airy Gazette. Yet there were six paragraphs plus a separate article about the town fundraiser for the fire department. And I'm not saying that's not important, but annexing 258 acres into the town is quite important and there was no mention of it at all. Despite having citizen comment and having it on the agenda. So.
Thank you.
Information's not quite getting out there as we might like.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
There's a, there's a comment here that. Sarah had made and I can respond to it or you can.
Go right ahead. Leslie, I'm trying to find the mayor.
Okay, Sarah, I don't know if you're still on, but even before you spoke, you, you wrote a question. Well, you said you thought the county already tried to build there to develop the property and the developer was refused and they sued the county. And that is absolutely correct. And what happened is the developer won the lawsuit and the county, like. I guess settled. Anyway, the county had to buy the property back and pay way more than the property was worth. So basically, the lawsuit resulted in the court saying, yes. The property owner has the right to develop the property. So that is, and there are people, I wasn't actually here when that happened. So there may be somebody who was actually around, maybe Lyndy was, I'm not sure. He remembers it, you know, in real time, but, but, but that's what happened.
Yes Diane, I was, Leslie, sorry guys. Yes, that is correct.
So the county definitely wants to get some money back since they way overpaid for that property.
Yes. Oh my gosh. I forget how much, but it was a lot of money. Yeah, yeah. And I'm seeing the comments and suggestions, maybe it should have been a larger billboard. There's a 20, $23.5 million. Is that what they're saying that it cost for the?
Like, is that the damages that they paid maybe? Or maybe they just bought the property, you know, over, I think the county bought the property as part of the settlement.
Let's see, there's another citizen that has commented, they have been unmuted and they're part of this meeting.
Okay. Danielle?
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Danielle Stoltz. I also live on Botler Road. And aside from all the comments that you've heard this evening that I wholeheartedly agree with. I just wanted to share that one of my biggest frustrations is the lack of transparency on this. I moved here back in 2011. My husband and I spent four years finding the perfect location to bring our daughter and to raise our family. And we were very happy when we got here. I was very concerned back on August 3rd, which was the first that I heard about the development of the Harrison-Lashir property. I watched the meeting that evening and I emailed my commissioner because I knew I was outside of the town limit. Commissioner Boucher replied to me and my concerns by saying that the property has been up for commercial development for decades. And is part of the county's long-term plan to increase the tax base and provide jobs. He stated that the benefit was desired by many parents with children. As a parent with a child and as a teacher in the Carroll County school system, I have not heard of any people saying they wanted us to develop Mount Airy, to be honest with you. He told me he copied Mr. Lyburne on my requests and that I could reach out to him. I did reach out to Mr. Lyburne back on August 26th and I have had no reply so far this time. I think, as I said before, one of my biggest frustrations with this is the lack of transparency and the confusion as to, you know, what do the different zonings mean and. It could be developed as office, it could be developed as industrial. Mr. Boucher said it would be developed as an office park. And I understand the concerns that I've heard. In fact, Mr. Breeding, when I spoke to you last week. You told me that, you know, this has been in the works for 20 years. And then this evening I'm hearing it's been started since 2009, which is only, you know, 11 years or so. So I, I think there's a lot of just misinformation and miscommunication, which is why as residents inside the town and outside the town, many of us are feeling frustrated and overwhelmed. Because there's been a lot of legwork behind the scenes by residents. That are, you know, trying to get information from 20 different places. And so I would just appreciate if we could figure out a way. To put factual information out there that would be accessible to all of us to be able to hear and truly know what's going on. You know, I recognize that whoever owns the property has a right to development. That's something, Mr. Breeding, that you've said to me and I agreed with you on. But I do think that it's important that we recognize that this isn't a done deal. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that we haven't been privy to. And my concerns are that if. As residents, we could just make sure that we know that we're all in the same place. So that's all I have to say. But I, I do truly value all the time that you have put into this and I appreciate all you're doing for your public.
Thank you Danielle. If you go onto the town website, the Mount Airy town website and you go to the agendas. There is a link on the agenda of the annexation agreement. And the information that we've talked about tonight. As far as the, the zones and things are concerned. If you go to Zone Mount Airy, Town of Mount Airy zoning code. Which is the way that we also do it. You go to a link and it will give you, it will give you a link to the different zones. It gives you the table of contents of the zoning book and then you can go through and look at the different zones.
Roxanne?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt for a second? If you, if you, if you go to the town website and just go to the very bottom of the website. You will find helpful links and you will see town code. And that is probably the easiest way to get to it. And then you do have to look at the table of contents, but zoning is like, what, chapter 112?
112.
Yeah, so it's at the end. So once you get to the planning. But if you go to the very bottom of the website, you'll find the link for the town code.
Okay. The mayor is listening, but he wants to talk. So we're trying to get him in here. I don't, I thought Gina, Gina, did you send him the link?
Yes, I did. And he has joined.
Okay, there he is, there he is. Okay, Pat, Mayor Pat, you can unmute yourself, would you please?
So star eight if he's on his personal cellphone or.
I don't know why he's not in.
Cursor to the bottom of your screen to unmute.
But like I will mention to everyone who's on the call tonight. We have 120 days and I know this is very stressful. We are in a pandemic. This request was brought to us to the town council and they've brought it down to us. So we're. We're, this is the first time that we're having the discussion and I appreciate everyone that has come on to the call.
Roxanne?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if everyone.
Go ahead.
I don't know if everyone who's on now was on in the beginning when the Carroll County planner Hannah Weber spoke. But maybe after Pat, you know, as you conclude this meeting, you might want to again let people know that the. The Carroll County Planning Commission meeting, the parcel 20 is what, that's September 30th?
September 30th at 6 o'clock.
So just to again clarify the difference and that that is a separate thing that's going on at the county level. Is also potentially going to impact people.
Hello, hello, hello.
Hi, Mayor Pat.
Hi, sorry to interrupt. Yeah. This is Mayor Rockenberg and I was not at the beginning of the meeting, but I've received a lot of texts that some flat out lies were said and that's very concerning to me. First of all, I want to thank the planning commission for being transparent. That's why we're having a public meeting. That's why the property was posted. That's why it's been on social media because we want to be transparent. We want to get it out there. Council member Carl Munder has done a great job. For the past several months of giving summaries on what's happening on the Leishir-Harrison negotiation. So. The lack of transparency, if it's happening at the county level, I can't speak to that. I heard that there were some phone calls not being returned on the county level. We don't control the county level, but we do control the town level. If there's any lack of transparency, I want to know exactly what that is to address it and to address it publicly. But I am concerned about a comment made by Lindsay. And Lindsay, you can tell me if you made this comment because I'm very disturbed. That the mayor and town council a few years back had a dinner with the county concerning Harzridge Elementary and that we would. Accept Leishir-Harrison as some kind of negotiation or some kind of agreement. That's a flat out lie. Did you make that comment?
No, I did not make that comment. She collapsed two things. I was told years before our joint planning. That, that we were supposed to take Harrison-Lashir because we got the school building. And I distinguish that differently from that we had a dinner with Isaac Minaj and his cohort. Years later talking about progressing forward. Two different conversations, two different things. And she.
Because I never made me or any council.
No, I know that Pat and I was there and I cleared that up with her, okay?
All right, let's, all right, that's good. Cause I've received about three different texts of people saying, what the heck?
Yes, and she, I jumped in and explained to her, no, there were two different conversations years apart.
Let's, let's be very clear. The town doesn't make deals.
Yes, I know that Pat.
Developers, we don't make deals with the county.
Yes.
I, I sent my thoughts out to you. The mayor's position, I wish it would stay farmland. I would love it to stay farmland and I understand every comment that I haven't heard or that I've read. Nobody wants any development next to them. If I were you, I'd feel the same way. That being said, look at the fact.
You're. You're breaking up, Pat.
Mission that watches things that would actually work with the residents, be involved rather than somebody up in Westminster. But that's the only reason I jumped on because if something's said about me, it better be factual. And I'm glad to hear that was not said because that would, that would be a lie. Okay.
I was there, I would be, I would always tell the straight. And I also say when something was misconstrued or didn't come out, come out the way I wanted to say. But. And she apologized and.
Okay, that's good. Well then, then, okay. I just, I just get a little over anxious when I hear something like that because for 20 years. I fault undue development and deals and I sure as heck don't want to be thought of as being a part of them because I am not.
Yes, I get that.
All right, thank you all. Thank you all. Continue and good luck. And Roxanne, you're right, 120 days. We take all comments. This is going to be a very public process. And we're also waiting on, I don't know if it was bought up. And we have a question of Leishir-Harrison on our town survey. No, it did not go out to the people outside of town limits because the town survey had about 30 questions. And a lot of them are based on town tax base, which is not contributed to by the people outside. So it's money that's going to be spent by people in town. So that's why the, the survey was only for in-town people. But it did have a Leishir-Harrison question on it. We hope to have that response back very soon. That'll be very important. To hear what the citizens think. So we're reaching out on every level we can to be transparent. So thank you all very much. So thank you all very much.
So Roxanne, so what's the next? I hear we have 120 days. I also know that, you know, I've been on the Planning Commission for a few years myself, and, you know, I've worked with Frank, and a group of us have worked on developing different relations, things like that. And I guess I just want to make sure that we have a choice in this, because I don't feel like I, I don't know how much. I think the underlying comment has been, this is, this is good for us. If we don't do this, we will not be in the driver's seat. And if we, we don't annex it in. And I guess what I'm hearing tonight is, there could potentially be that, that might not be the position. I just want to make sure that we do actually have some choices in this.
We always have a choice, Judy. You always have a choice to vote, however you, you want to vote.
Vote, but if, so if we don't, if we don't do this.
If, okay, so if we don't do this, it remains property of the county, or the developer, IDA. They have, they have the right to develop it however they want to. As, as it is zoned right now, I think it is in the county. It is the residential with the 40,000 lot.
Four foot lot.
Four foot lots. So when you take the amount of acreage there is, now, it's, you know, if you just go straight with that acreage, it's 240 units. But, you know, there's always things that, you know, there's.
Well, there's.
Streets and roads and everything, but they would develop it. And that would, yes, that would be out of our control. The county also has the ability, if they would want to rezone it to something else, that also, they have. If we felt that it would be a detriment to the town of Mount Airy, we would definitely speak up about that. We have spoken up a little bit about parcel, the EC-132020-0030, which I think is, the people are calling it parcel 20. That's the one in the, in, in the county that, that homeowner has requested a rezoning, which is, that hearing is September the 30th at 6:00.
Got it.
In, in the county? That's the Carroll County Planning Commission?
Right, so you would go to the county. Hannah, you're still here. Would you please explain the process if someone wanted to speak about that property?
Yes, we're still working on getting the agenda out since it's a month away. But when the agenda is posted, the agenda will have an access code and a phone number to call in. And also, at any time, members of the community can write in on our Carroll County rezoning website, and those comments will go to people in the planning department as well as the planning commission.
I mean, you say that, and that website is the Carroll County website, and then slash something, or?
Carrollrezoning.org.
Okay, Carrollrezoning.org, great, thank you.
And go to the planning, oh, sorry. If you go to the planning department in the directory, on like the little side handle, there's a link for the Carroll rezoning as well.
And I guess I just have one last question. And the reason that we're having to make the decision now versus, a lot of the community came out with questions around, you know, why now during a pandemic? Is there a reason that this got brought up now versus six months from now?
Yeah, it was, the IDA brought it to the council. It was on the council agenda, and then a request for the annexation. Once that happens, it automatically comes to the planning commission. At that point, we have 120 days. We also have the option to extend it for another 120 days.
Got it.
So that's where we, that's, we're just starting the discussion. I think there's one other person that has their hand up. Diane, we'll let you in just real quick comment, and then we're going to move on, if any, for.
No, I'll, I'll hold off. I, I would like to say, I would like to see the questionnaire that the town was, people were given. I am a social science researcher, and there are ways to write these things to get the answers that you like. And I would like to see how that questionnaire was written. If I go to town, if I go to the town building, can I get a copy of it?
You have to call them, because they're not letting people come in. So, yeah, call and ask for the town administrator, David Warrington. He'll help you with that.
What is his name again, David?
David Warrington.
Okay.
Okay. Question for Hannah. I emailed a letter. Okay, there, here's a question for Hannah.
Back to her.
Oh, okay.
Correct email.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Yep.
So anybody, any other commission members have a question? Questions for Frank? Right now? Okay, I know this has been frustrating. We've learned a lot from this with this format of the meeting. We're going to have to review this and, and see. I wanted to make sure that, you know, the people, we had the public and, and the input. We need to review a little bit about how this does. I apologize for the frustrations for people, but we're trying our best to get everybody, the input, public input as much as possible. So we don't make a decision, we're going to move on from this. We will be discussing this at our next meeting. So anyone who hasn't, is on the meeting, would like to speak, or knows someone who likes to speak, tell them to go to the website, the Mount Airy website, or call the town, call the town, and ask for John Breeding, and he'll discuss or tell you how you can get on to the next meeting. Okay. Moving on, we go to future items. John, do you want to talk about the future items?
Yeah, Roxanne, I'll gladly do that. And anybody who had requested the information in the past, I will automatically send them an invite to the next meeting or let them know how we're going to be moving forward with the September meeting. And again, the September meeting will be on the 28th of September. So the future, future items on the agenda, S180031, Twin Arch Business Park, Section 4, Lot 8. Again, when it's a future item, it might be this month, this coming month, it might be the following month. These are items that are sort of in play right now. That was a, once they plan, you saw they're putting an additional building in the back of the property. Going to be under the same ownership, it's not being subdivided, be a new, new building on Lot 8. Then we have Chick-fil-A, S190036, the final site plan, including off-site improvements and amended plaque to be attached. Again, everybody's sort of aware of that and knows of that project. The 1401 Ridge Side, Ridge, Ridge Court, which is the Dr. Boaz, Dr. Schwartz parcel, that is, had come in for the MP district, changed the text. He did submit an elevation of his proposed building, and I want to present that to you to get some guidance for him and myself on what type of building we're looking at within the MP district and replacing that existing building that's going to be demolished or razed. And again, I still want to go through the guidelines for doing construction outside the DTZ. We have guidelines. I just want to bring that back in front of you guys to sort of make sure that we have everything covered. I don't think the MP district is with inside that guidelines. So my interpretation of the code is that it's supposed to be very much a residential in nature. Typically, it'd be an existing home that you're renovating and creating a, an office with inside that existing building. I just want to make sure that it has some clarity and clear direction for any plan or development coming in the MP zone. And that's about it, Roxanne, for agenda items.
Okay, someone said here is Chick-fil-A a done deal?
I think it's a done deal.
No.
Approved it.
Yeah, we haven't approved it yet. The next question, Frank, whose decision was it on the IDA council to move forward with the annexation during the pandemic?
We've been working on this for over 11 years. You know, we weren't waiting for this pandemic to show up to start this process. It, timing is what it is, you know, and we, I think, you know, we were starting to discuss this with the town as far as the legal aspects of creating this annexation agreement a year ago or more. It's been more than that, probably. So anyway, it's just a matter of when it all showed up. And, you know, all this hit at one time. And I'd have to say, you know, this pandemic's going to end. And none of us have a crystal ball, but, you know, life will go on, including businesses that want to get back to what they were doing. They have to in many cases. So, you know, I, it's not like, you know, everybody's going to go virtual and not need an office building or something like that. And who says this town doesn't need a hospital or need an educational facility that this property would be able to provide for? So, you know, there's, and there's a whole lot of things that I haven't even thought about that could go in there that could be so beneficial or needed someday. And we're talking 10, 20 years from now, when a lot of these buildings would happen. It's going to take a long time for it to develop. It's not going to all happen overnight, the day after this pandemic is over. So that's, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next thing is our next commission meeting will be September the 28th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Before we ask for a German, is there any other information, any other questions, concerns that the Planning Commission has at this time? Thank you all very much for all your time and your patience here this evening. If there's no questions or concerns, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all, we'll see you the 17th, September 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Frank, for your time.
Good night.